And welcome to the Cedar Falls Regular City Council Meeting this July 16, 2018. I'll call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call from Madam Clerk, please.
Miller.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Blanford.
Here.
Dara.
Here.
Whelan.
Here.
Green.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item C is a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting July 9.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Item D, are there any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item I, executive session, is being removed from the agenda tonight.
Item I for the executive session, thank you. Item E is new business. E1 is a consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless the council or someone from the public request an item to be pulled separately for such discussion. Any such request from council, from the public? I'll now review the consent calendar very briefly. Item A is approve the recommendation of the mayor relative to the reappointment of Mike Selenic to the Library Board of Trustees. As always, appreciate the public servants working on behalf of the city. Thank you, Mike. Item B is receive and file the committee home minutes of July 9 relative to interviewing Mike, recycling facility update, flood plan ordinance. Item C is receive and file communication from the Civil Service Commission for the position of accountant. D is receive and file the contract for the 2018 sidewalk assessment project. And E is approving various permits and licenses. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item 2 is a resolution calendar. These items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public request not to be polled for such discussion. Any such request from council?
Mr. Mayor, item 2C and 2E?
You have to help me out there. Help us out.
Item 2C.
2C.
Charlie and 2 Echo.
C and E.
Item N, if you would.
Pardon me?
Item N.
N is in Nancy.
If you would.
Thank you.
Q?
Q? So right now I have C is in Charlie, E is in Edward, N is in Nancy, and Q is in Q. Is that correct?
That's quick.
R as well?
Yes.
I'll summarize the items less those that were mentioned. Item A is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an affiliate TV agreement relative to rights to broadcast certain programs on Channel 15. I know we pulled C and E, but B through K are resolutions approving agreements in support of various organizations relative to the community betterment grants. These organizations include Bo's Beautiful Blessings, Cedar Falls Community Theater, Cedar Falls Historic Society, Cedar Falls Women's Club, Cedar Falls College Hill Partnership, Eagleview Partners, George With State Park, North Cedar Neighborhood Association, Volunteer Center of the Cedar Valley, and the Waterloo Cedar Falls Sympathy Orchestra. And these funds come from motel hotel tax that goes to grants that are approved by council. Moving on to item L is approving and authorizing the expenditure of funds for a garbage truck. Item M is approving and authorizing execution of a professional services agreement. O is approving and authorizing execution of amendment number one to the project agreement relative to the North Cedar Falls Flood Buyout Program. P is approving and authorizing execution of a purchase offer in conjunction with the North Cedar Flood Buyout Program. S is setting August 6 the date of public hearing on the contract for the 2018 sidewalk assessment project. T is setting August 6 the date of public hearing on the proposed rezoning of property on West 22nd Street. U is setting August 6 as the date of public hearing on proposed amendments to zoning relative to the city's flood plan regulations. And V is setting August 6 as the date of public hearing on proposed amendments to the zoning agreement relative to Midway Business Park. Is there a motion to approve the resolution calendar minus the items removed?
Second.
Motion second. This requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving back to item C, it reads a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an agreement in support of the Cedar Falls Community Theater relative to an FY19 community betterment grant. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Open it up for discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is my first time going through the community betterment grants. And as I've looked through all the betterment grants, they have this provision that it has to be for the benefit of Cedar Falls. And I look at that as being something that is accessible or has value to all the residents. So I had a question on this item and one below. For the community theater, what it says is $1,000 for new wireless microphones for actors and singers and sound equipment. So I have a concern for it, just as I understand CFCT, that it benefits the attendees of the performances, which are generally paid for, but it's not free for the people of Cedar Falls. And I, as I understand, that's what the community betterment grants are meant for. So just a question on that.
I would ask staff if there's precedence there or typically in the past what we've done and how these items are looked into. Or Kim?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Kim Manning, our Tours and Visitor Manager?
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, it's the Visitors and Tourism Bureau Board that reviews the applications. And we have supported the community theater for many, many years. I think that probably because it's a historical building and an iconic piece of Cedar Falls. I understand your point about having to purchase a ticket to see a performance at the theater, but they also do public programs. We've used the theater on occasion to do celebrations for the Tourism Bureau and other types of activities. I see your point, but I think that my group is thinking of the greater good and the fact that the theater has been a very longstanding attraction in the city.
So would you expect the things that you, the activities that you do would also take advantage of these microphones and like if there's events that the city is kind of hosting there and it's a public activity?
Yeah, I would say so. Now, that doesn't happen every month, but on occasion we have. Sure.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
Anything further from council? Has been motion second, requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item E is approving and authorizing the agreement supportive Cedar Falls Women's Club for the betterment grant. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Open that up for discussion as well.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a similar question. Very small amount of money, $580, but it's taxpayer funds. Repairing the concrete steps outside the women's club. Would this grant be in order to benefit the city of Cedar Falls again?
I would say that probably the same kind of rationale was used by my board as we discussed the grant. I agree it's a small amount of money, but that's not to say that we shouldn't scrutinize it. Again, this is a historical iconic building that is kind of part of Cedar Falls identity. I know that's what a lot of my members were thinking about. And they do look, when they go through these grants, they look at how many people these organizations serve and that type of thing as they go through the application process.
I happen to be at that meeting, and those folks do have great conversations about everything happening in Cedar Falls. And again, the Tourism Board by default talks quite a bit about these kind of quality of life draws that brings folks to Cedar Falls.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, they put a lot of thought into it.
Yep, they do. Thank you. Any further comment from staff?
Mayor, I just want to make one quick comment, just for clarification. I just wanted to make mention that these funds come from our hotel motel tax dollars, not our property tax dollars. So I just wanted to clarify that when there was a comment about property tax dollars. There is a difference.
Yeah, that's good.
That this is, and so I think again, when you hear the thing about attractions and tourism, then it has that more relation to the hotel motel.
Yeah, very good.
Good point.
Thank you again. There's no further discussion? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item N is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a supplemental agreement number one relative to the Center Street Recreational Trail Project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. We'll open it up for discussion to council.
I was hoping for some staff clarification on some of the services that this is covering. I hadn't heard that there was a trail redesign of the trail alignment based on CFU electing not to relocate some poles. And then item B, there was traffic signal modification. So I didn't know if staff could speak to those changes.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So the majority of the funds, $10,000 of that, is for construction staking. So currently we're short of surveyors, so we need help in that regard. So $10,000 of that is for construction staking. And then I believe the remainder is $5,600. I don't have the exact number, but I think, I think it was like $4,000 of that. The majority of that dollar amount was for some traffic signal modification. So the consultant had designed a particular pedestrian crossing with a signal. And then after they had that design, we determined that the Federal Highway Administration pulled their approval for that particular device. And so there was some redesign required for that. And so that's where the majority of that's coming from. And then I believe there was a utility pole that we gave them the impression that that was, they were going to be able to move that. And after the fact, we got more information from CFU that that particular pole could not be moved. So they had to do some rework in that, in that regard as well.
I would assume is it Claire Street then? Do you know offhand?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Good motion second, requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item Q is a resolution approving, accepting, and lien notice and special promissory note for property located on Clay Street relative to the rental to single-family owner conversion incentive program. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Open it up for discussion with council.
I pulled that because earlier tonight we had another healthy discussion around Code 14149. And we really haven't talked about the purpose of that. And the primary purpose was to continue to work at improving our neighborhoods throughout the community. They're kind of mixed use between owner occupied and rentals. And so some, some things came out of that that not everyone was happy with. But I did want to point out that one of the, one of the elements of that ordinance was this item here, the lien notice and promissory note, kind of a no interest loan to people that are wanting to convert rental properties back into single-family homes. And we're hoping to invite people to do that and especially invite young people who've moved away and are moving back to town. And Allison James is sitting out here, and she's the applicant of this. And I just wanted to point out that there's some real positive aspects to that ordinance as well. And that's one good example. And the more we can do to attract young people like Allison and her friend Alice Miller right next to her to come back to Cedar Falls, we ought to do it. So I just wanted to point that out and thank Aiden and Allison for their commitment to Cedar Falls.
Thank you, Frank.
Mayor, if I can just clarify one comment. Sorry, Mr. Dara, but it is a, it's not a low-interest loan, it's a forgivable loan.
She looked a little worried when I said that.
Any further comments? It has been motion second, requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item R is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a supplemental agreement number one relative to the Cedar River Recreational Improvement Project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion second. We'll open it up for discussion. Questions?
I wonder if staff could give us a rundown of this item and what we're looking at here.
Are you wanting to know about the funding or about what's involved in the project?
Both.
Both? Okay. All right. Well, this proposal is to get into the final design work, finishing some of the preliminary design elements that we kind of put on hold, that you might do a little bit of survey of the depth of the river and things like that for preliminary design. But we put that on hold, saying that we would just put that into the final design in moving the project forward. We've had a couple council discussions on this project. If we get into kind of how funding has been discussed, that started, we had more discussion about that in December of 2017, where we talked about prioritization of several CIP items, this being one of those. And we talked about the flood reserve fund and then talked about the Cedar River project. And we've split the project into two areas on our CIP. We have the riverbank improvements, and then we have the in river, or whitewater, it's been called, those components. And so then we had a council and P&amp;Z Joint Committee meeting in January of 2018, January 15, to discuss all the projects. This was highlighted as one of those projects as well. And then the CIP was adopted that same night. Again, all of the funding levels and the funding sources have been the same throughout those discussions. For the riverbanks, CIP item number 33, GO identified as $740,000. Gaming grant has been identified as something we'd like to apply for at a little bit over $1.2 million. And then the in river, the whitewater components, CIP item number 34, with a 50-50 split between private funds and the flood reserve, $1 million for each of those. So that's a little bit about the history of the funding discussion. So what we're wanting to do, and we talked about in a March 2018 committee meeting, was that we recommended that we go ahead and move forward with final design so that we know the costs a lot better. Right now, we have kind of placeholders in the CIP as planning in terms of both of those together totaling about $4 million. And really to get a better handle on permitting aspects, to get a better handle on what the funding might need to be actually for this project, what would be the private component of that, we need to get into the final design so that we have better answers to all of that. And so we propose that we need to do that now.
Thank you.
If I may?
Please.
I'd just like to urge council to vote for this and get to final design so we can get to that number. There's a substantial fundraising portion of this that's going to have to happen privately. And if we can't get to that number, we don't even have a shot. So.
Thank you.
Yes, so just to finish up, I like the project. I like the idea of it. I do think that river is an underutilized resource. My only concern is the use of the flood reserve funds. I know we've talked about it a little bit amongst ourselves, but that does concern me. We're essentially using our self-funded insurance for it with no predetermined means of replacing that insurance fund. So I'm just, I would like us to discuss that as we go through the rest of this process.
We do have a way to replenish those funds, I believe. Am I correct in that, staff?
Well, that's one of the things that we talked about at the work session is there's a couple different avenues. We have the monies that come in through the Economic Development Reserve Fund that we use from the TIFF district when it expired. And those dollars are set aside. And what's the right amount to set aside for the Economic Development Fund? And then also, by the time we get to this project, it'll be a couple of years down the road. So those dollars, once we hit whatever the council establishes as goals, could replenish those flood reserve monies.
Mr. Whelan?
Just a quick comment. I certainly support this and have for 14 years. A long, long ago project that hasn't come about. The reason I support it is a lot of the studies have been on young people moving to communities, it's based on quality of life and the number of services. Can they get out and bike ride? Can they have walkable trails? This is just another aspect that will bring people to our community. And if you don't think that's true, look at the number of kayaks and canoes and rafts that you see on top of the cars going to where they can use them. So I think it's a good idea for us to pick up the pace and utilize the river, which we have not been utilizing. By the way, it's one of the premier areas for whitewater in the country, the flow rate. Enough said.
Mr. Dara?
I'd like to support Dave's comments. I've been supporting it for 14 years too. But if you haven't had a chance, especially as council members, but anybody watching, I would really encourage you, I think the water's down now in the Makoka River, but go to Manchester and see what this firm has done over there. I'm not a kayaker necessarily. I support their opportunity to kayak. I'm not a fisherman. But I do like to watch water, and I like to sit and listen to it. And this facility over there, it's designed, there are two sections on there that you can actually take a wheelchair and sit right by the water. And when you think about, I hear a lot of people saying, "Don't do it because it's a handful of kayakers that want this." Yeah, the kayakers want it, but there's a whole population out there that would be drawn to the river. And we can't wait on this any longer. I really hope we can be aggressive about this. The other positive thing about it, we met with a city manager over there, I think that was his title. We're talking about raising $1 million, maybe less, here in a community of $40,000, their community of $4,000. And they raised $600,000 in eight months. There's an interest out there. There's people, if there's, if we build it, they will come. And if we offer a plan, people I think will invest. So I really hope we can just move forward aggressively on this from tonight on.
Thank you, Mr. Dara.
I too very much support this project. My question would be on the flood reserve dollar amount. Once the levy is complete, will we need to have as much money set aside for the flood reserve?
Staff, anything towards that?
It's hard to say, you know.
Yeah, that's the, that's the million-dollar question or the $2.6 million question. We have, right now is in flood reserves approximately, Jennifer, 2.6, approximately 2.6 when all of our FEMA reimbursements from the 2016 floods dollars come back in. And so what's the proper amount to have in there? Is it, is it 1.6? Is it 2.6? I think last year in the 2 points, in the 2016 flood, we had considerably less, obviously, than the 2008 flood. To Mr. Cruz's point, we are raising the protection level on the south side of the river from a 250-year flood event to a 500-year flood event. So that should help there. But him saying that, not knowing, you know, what neighborhoods on the north side of the river that could get flooded. So it's, it's very difficult, but I do think there's other avenues if we run into flood that we can pull reserves from.
What did we spend in '16? Do we know those numbers roughly? I mean, money out, money in, I know is delayed, but.
Well, originally, our share, our share was going to be for the disaster assistance, that's, you know, like streets and trails or whatever on our part, was going to be $107,000. Now, remember, that's only our, that was only our share. So, you know, usually it's the federal 75%, the state 10, and the city at 15. And in addition, our, we would have had our local buyout share originally was right at $300,000, was going to be our 15%. Now, it's a little more than that because we added some properties to it now. So that was again, going to be our share. So when Ron said that we spent more, but we'll be getting back 85% of that.
So if, if there wasn't a federal claim to the 2016, if we had to shoulder all of that as sort of a worst-case scenario for some reason, do we have a rough number on that? I know I'm putting you on the spot, Jennifer.
Well, we would have, it would have been about $1.9 million that we would have had in total that we really are going to cash flow before we get the reimbursements back.
Okay, very good. Mr. Miller, quick.
Just to clarify for the folks at home, the flood reserve fund is relatively new, I guess, if you will. That's something the council has taken direction or given direction to staff on in response to a number of flooding events. So the city takes care of, if you recall, in 2016, the city took care of garbage disposal. They took care of any number of street repairs and all sorts of different expenses as a result of the flood. So we're trying to take a step to safeguard that. I guess I don't want people to be scared at home that we're looking at using some flood reserve funds for a whitewater project. At least I'm not, knowing that we're going to get that reserve fund built back up to a certain level. And we haven't decided necessarily what that is as a council, I don't believe. But it comes off a little deceiving in that we're going to use flood reserve funds, and then all of a sudden we're not safe because financially, the city is sitting in a good spot. And for myself, anyway, I'm comfortable using some of these funds for a quality of life project that I think is going to help the community as a whole. So.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz?
I was just going to ask on the numbers, or buyouts in those numbers, Jennifer?
Yeah, that was the second number where I mentioned our share was going to be $300,000.
Okay.
Now, it is going to be a little more, like I said, because I know a couple council meetings ago, we added another property, but.
But 2016 was their second highest level in history?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So what I'm getting at when I asked about the number and what we should carry forward is how many of those expenses will be repeatable, in other words, or will they repeat if we have the same level flood, which is the second highest in history? So if 300 is not going to repeat itself, theoretically, we could lower the number by 300. We might get into a few other areas where a house might say, "Oh, I'm buying out," I suppose, right? Is it, they choose if they want to be in the buyout?
And I think that's where Jennifer came up with the $1.8, $1.9 million. So what we took is that's would be the total monies that Cedar, the city of Cedar Falls spent on flood recovery and flood protection during the 2016 flood.
That would be repeatable theoretically.
Depending on, as you said, because there are, just for clarification, there were a number of properties that were considered for a buyout, but we only had a certain dollar figure to go so far. So there's still properties out there that could be purchased. And there's still flood recovery that, that has to happen, or flood protection, I'm sorry.
Anything further from council? Appreciate the discussion. Thanks a lot, staff. It is motion on the table, requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3 is passing ordinance amending Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances relative to butchering and disposal of dead animals. Upon its first consideration, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires roll call vote. I'm sorry.
What do they update?
I'm sorry?
Oh, it would be in the packet.
The packet, yes, sir.
Sorry.
Do you want it, do you want?
You're good, you're good.
Okay, thank you. We're good.
I was working on the.
It's okay. Roll call vote, I think we're at, right? City Clerk?
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item F, is there a motion to allow bills?
So moved.
Motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item G, does council have any items for referral? Moving on, any, council have any updates? I did ask Director Rippling I did ask Director Riplinger to update the council and public on activities in his department so far this summer and into this year.
Well, thanks, Mayor. We do have a few projects that have been going on and we're working on, and some things that actually are completed. Just to give you a little bit of an update, the pickleball courts at Orchard Hill Park have received their base rock and their first layer of asphalt. For the community's information, that's going to be about 140 by 140 piece asphalt with eight pickleball courts on it. So, we'll be proceeding with that, the fencing and additional surfacing here in the next few weeks. Blast had their, the Blast Swim Club had their swim meet at the Aquatic Center this last weekend. That is 554 swimmers, not only from Iowa but from surrounding states. It's very well-attended and one of their favorite and largest events we have at the Aquatic Center. Just to give you a little bit, we did have a hot June, and we had over 14,000 swimmers at the Aquatic Center in June. Thanks to some private donors and the Rotary Club and city staff, the new shelter at Clay Street, Clay Street Park is complete. If you get a chance to go by, that is pretty unique facility, and we're very proud that that's in our park over there. A project that we've been talking about is a new monument sign, entrance sign at Veterans Memorial Park, and that is also being helped, being paid for by donors. That, that sign will look quite a bit like the CFU sign across the street. In fact, it'll mirror that. We wanted to kind of keep that consistency through the corridor. Hopefully, we'll be starting that project within the next few weeks. City staff is also working with some volunteers who are big proponents of disc golf, and they are helping us install 18 new baskets at that facility. They'll be completing new concrete pads, tree plantings, and those sorts of things over the next few months into next year. Some visitors and tourism items we have going on. The 142nd Iowa State Trap Shoot starts tomorrow and ends on Sunday. That is at 6138 West Wopsey Road, and that is 500 participants from 15 states. And then, lastly, we will have the Shrine Bowl Parade this Saturday at, on the parquet at 9:30 a.m. And the culmination of the Shrine events is the football game, and it's the 46th Iowa Shrine Football Game, July 21st at 4:00 p.m. And that'll be up at the Union Dome.
Thank you, Mark.
Mark, did Sid Morris have anything to do with raising funds for the sign at Veterans Park?
Sid, it's always, I've known him for a number of years, he never says no, so...
Well, thanks, Sid.
He's been a huge help. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Whelan?
Could Mr. Riplinger give us a little update on the meetings he's having with some residents that are affected by the development on Green Hill in South Maine?
Yes, Mr. Whelan, about a month or so ago, was working with Matthias Landscaping, and they put together a design concept for trees along Green Hill Road, basically between about the 200 block of Spruce Hills up to about the 500, 500 block. I sent out 19 letters, those were 14 property owners, excuse me, 15 property owners, and then four renters that were renting the facilities there. I have received phone calls from about seven of them that were interested in the plans, and I've met with four of them so far. Four property owners, I have another meeting tomorrow, and then another meeting a week from today. And so, we'll continue to meet with those individuals. They're very excited about the possibility. They would encourage, when we get all the data for city council, I'll update you, but they would encourage if the city is going to do this, they would like it planted this fall.
Thank you.
I've got one last update for the citizens and for council. And speaking of Sid Morris, he was recently chosen as the Iowan of the Day for the Iowa State Fair, August 17th, I believe. So, there he is. We got you on camera, Sid.